Three twenty-eight.
Three twenty-eight, alright. Yeah.
We need him, yes, we need Mr. Lee.
Is Mr. Lee, is Mr. Lee? I'll say, please sit. Three thirty-eight?
Three twenty-nine.
Cause I gotta be back at four fifteen. Because I have, uh, I'll be there from four to seven o'clock tonight. And we need to go ahead and take care of this animal shelter.
Yes, sir, we do. They're really interesting.
Okay. What time is it?
It is three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine. Do you have a cellphone?
You might be damaged in the payroll, in the family, so. Hey.
Please turn.
Good evening, go ahead and call this special call meeting to order. At this time, I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Short, can you give us an invitation, sir? Let's bow this, to have a father, and to some of this afternoon, or beautiful day, that you have given us. We ask you to hold a father to guide through liberation of the service in the county. And whatever business that is on the general, let us conduct the business of other people, because government exists for one reason, that is other people for other people and by the people. And let whatever decision is made by this council, will be done for the benefit of the whole. We actually hold a father to continue, to look down on our city, lest our city, our city stands in need of prayer. And always give it glory and honor, in the holy name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Short, rural call. Rural call.
I think it's on the side.
President Bowie?
President.
Councilman Bowlin?
President.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Here.
Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Right.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Okay, as stated before, we do have a call, um, we don't have a motion to approve the attempted.
Senator President.
County motion on the floor, Councilwoman Youngblood, second by?
Short.
Councilwoman LaShaw. And the father, custom additions, uh, rural call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Uh, to the business items, council members, we have, um, four business items, uh, to be discussed today, and other business items, if you would like to add at this time, you may, uh... Mr. President, have you, have you set a date where, you know, this is going to? Yeah, I, I put it to him, um, should be emailed to him today with the topic. What, it's gonna be left up to him. Okay, whatever date he has. He's a baby, okay? Uh, business item number one is the animal shelter. Uh, as you may be familiar with that, the public works, uh, are the ones that go out when there's animals, roadkill, um, they go out to the animal shelter and empty the trailer. But due to the fact that, um, they're sick leave, whatever you want to call it, the animal shelter has been, uh, over-stocked with roadkill. So this weekend, I had opportunity to talk with a gentleman, uh, who went out this morning, and took the dogs, and also the deers, and took it upon himself, go ahead and bury them today, so we can, uh, open up the animal shelter to allow other roadkill to come in. I know Chief Green was first to brought it to my concern, because basically it was a public safety hazard, and not only with that, uh, the smell from animal shelter, you know, was coming over the airway, uh, airway committee, airway committee, uh, queue. So, uh, I took it upon myself, go ahead and did a contract with Frank Mill- Millison, and he own charged one hundred seventy-five dollars to, he went out today to, um, get out animals, and also he took it upon himself to bury in a site where we usually bury, uh, at the Bible Park, I think it is. So, uh, I know Mr. Jones supposed to have given me a contract, but I guess he had opportunity to get the contract today, but I would be paying one hundred seventy-five dollars out of my discretion there, so I just wanted to bring it before the council today to ask, uh, approval of me paying one hundred seventy-five dollars on my discretion there, so for him to help today, to alleviate the problem. He was out this morning at seven o'clock, and I thank the shelter staff, open this and take animals, am I correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Alright, so, have a motion on the floor, by Councilwoman Youngblood, second, Councilman Bowlin, Councilman LaShaw. Uh, Mr. President, I don't think it's right for you to have to be this out of your discretion there. I think this is a city, this is a city problem. I do think the council would be okay with other funds that would take care of that need. I don't just think this burden should be laid at your feet, and I would hope and pray that the council would think likewise, look at some other revenues, so that we can eradicate this problem. Also, Mr. President, not only is the, uh, public work general services required to help bury the...
Do you all have microphones on or are you here?
No, they're not, they're not.
Uh, the trash, uh, also is, is building up in our, in our city. Trash is not being picked up, and all this, and I'm hoping and praying that the workers in the public work general services will be back on the job quick, fast, and in a hurry, because not only the smell exuded from the animal shelter into the airway community, smell of the trash that began to affect the city as well. Enough, Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Short.
Yes, uh, President Bowie, um, I applaud you for what you're doing, you're trying to do the right thing to serve a citizen, but I think that, uh, that fee should come out of, uh, public work, cause there's the money there, and it needs to come out of there, uh, to pay for that. Yes, you should pay, you should have to pay that out of your discretion there. We have, we have funds there in public work, that, that, that should come out of there to cover that.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, go ahead, that the fees for public services for discarding and burying animals, and that the animal shelter comes out of public work still later. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, Mr. President, I wanted to know, um, how often was the one seventy-five to be paid? I know this time, he's gotten all of the, um, the dogs, is that once a week, twice a week?
Well, basically, just use, use them.
It's necessary?
As needed.
We're gonna wait till they're wake up, or we're gonna have them on a rotating schedule?
On rotating schedule, yes.
Okay, so is that gonna be bi-weekly?
Uh, yes, ma'am, hopefully, uh, public works will be back, but, you know, this was an immediate, uh, solution, but, uh, hopefully, that once they come back, we'll be able to...
Oh, thank you, as Councilwoman Thomas said, thank you, I just wanted to know, um, the amount, but thank you so very much for doing that.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, any other questions, discussion, alright, rural, rural call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Okay, alright, thank you, councilmen. Uh, now to Liberty, Disclosure Upgrade, Councilwoman, you said you wanted Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Lee, please come forward.
Once, once, uh, he's coming, it's, it, living?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason why I want Mr. Lee, Mr., uh, not just, uh, uh, I'm, the reason why I asked Mr. Lee to come, because you know, the city itself has, we have an ordinance where, um, where we bring these mobile trailers in and place in our, in our city. The ordinance has been in place for a long time, and, uh, we have had other people that wanted to bring, but, but they, you, they have to come before the council, and I understand that you have a business, and the, the way it should be that, uh, he's the business licensed person, and, uh, the mobile, uh, business is coming into my area ward seven. And I, when I say by ordinance, I go by book. I go by what ordinance and what city the Melissa Coles say, that we, we, what we should do, and, uh, Mr. Lee is the licensed man to go out, and he, he knows the ordinance, so this is why I want Mr. Lee to be present, uh, when you come, so that, um, we make the decision on, with the mobile home, that is done according to the way the council decides to vote on it, but we all, all have to be careful too. Uh, our ordinance on the book, what it say, and I understand that this is dealing with our garbage, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a trailer that you need, that's, I, I went out, I saw it, and, uh, but I would like for it to be done according to the way that we're supposed to do it in the book.
Alright, Mr. Meyer, please come on, Mr. Lee, Councilwoman, you got a question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Lee, uh, when you went out to, uh, take, and I know that's your job as the license, and you go by the ordinance in the book, and, uh, according to your instruction that you see, according to what the words say about, uh, the trailer being brought in, and, uh, you could not, uh, sign the license till it get approved from the, uh, permission from the council?
No, I couldn't give them a permit to allow them placing, if that get approved from the council.
That's, that's...
That was all, all the business.
Yes.
And that's why I brought Mr. Meyer before us today, and I know in the past, we have granted, uh, business for, to use a trailer at a time, and then after that time, then, uh, it's, uh, they got to come back. Keep in mind that with this particular company here, uh, the land that they own is not, you know, they rent the land from someone else.
Yes.
Someone else, number one, and number two, they're providing services to the city itself, you know, for us to pick up the, you know, the garbage.
And that's why I said that it needs to be said, you know, we as, uh, we have ordinance on the book, and, uh, you know, other people see, well, we turning them down, but we have to be, uh, open to the public to let them know this is why we, we make this decision.
And it's a business area, uh, for the...
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Lee?
No.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, go ahead, Councilwoman Jackson, Mr. Lee?
Mr. Lee, if you, if you'd be so kind to give me a couple moments, um, thank you for coming, first of all. Does the ordinance, I'm gonna say that I haven't had an opportunity to read on it, um, does the ordinance provide, um, for businesses to come in? I just heard the president said that, um, the ordinance allows businesses to come in for a certain period of time? Um, it does not allow for a certain period of time, what, what?
No, no, what I'm saying is, it was a business that, uh, I'm not gonna say the business, they started off as a trailer, and in the past, we allowed them a certain time limit to go ahead and, uh, brick the building in, and go ahead and, uh, staple it, but we gave them enough time, but at the time, granted, they were using other trailer, but then after that, I think it's about two years, and they gave them enough time to get the stable built.
Okay, so our, uh, help me understand that our ordinance is, um, strict in that no businesses or homeowners shall have a trailer inside the city itself, is that what the, in essence, what it states?
Unless approved by, so it's not, it shall never be done, thou shalt not, is, thou shalt not unless approved by the council? Exactly.
Okay, and so that gives us the opportunity to actually base upon, um, the services and information provided, that we may actually allow, um, the company to do that. Was Liberty approved to have this trailer out initially, when they first came in?
I don't know, I wouldn't...
Yes.
So they came before the council, and they were approved to have this, did we put a timeframe on them at that time?
When they came.
They were here before we...
That's before they came.
Right, that's why I'm asking, if previous council approved, if there wasn't a timeframe, and it's been approved, and all they're doing is upgrading their facilities, uh, to give, have more employees, increase capacity for our citizens to come forward, I don't see why it shouldn't be done.
Any other questions, comments? We're gonna take a motion to allow, Mr. President? I made our move that we allow Liberty the opportunity to bring on this trailer, and to conduct business of picking up the garbage, uh, as they have been doing for a normal years here in the city itself.
Second.
County motion on the floor, by Councilwoman Short, second by Councilwoman Bowlin. Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
No, I, I went out, I saw the trailer, you know, I just, by me, I'm just, you know, what did you say, Susan?
Huh?
What did you say, Susan?
No, I hadn't, but I, I, I am gonna, I do wanna discuss something, but I'm waiting for you, I haven't said anything.
Oh, okay, that, that was why I had, um, concern, because, uh, it's happening to other people, uh, citizens been trying to do that, and I wanted them to know that, uh, I'm not, I believe in doing things fair and right, so that's why I wanted to let them know that they have to come before the council, not just bringing in on your own and place it, and then we have to talk. So this is, this is the way I want them to know, cause they ask you, well, you let so-and-so bring, why we couldn't bring?
Absolutely, thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Youngblood?
Um, yes, and I'm all for, I love Liberty, and I'm all for the, them coming and doing that. I would ask, I mean, I would, I would personally want to see, um, like, a review, since, since it's a contractual company, I, I can understand not having to, to say, make it a per- a permanent structure, because it is contractual, but I, I would feel like that we would need to say, like, to review, as one would review the contract, review the, the... Uh, because as Councilwoman Thomas said, we, we do have people come and say, oh, you did it for so-and-so, yes. And this doesn't mean we're setting a precedent to open it up, to let mobile homes come in, and trailers come in town. That's the latest thing we want.
Yes.
But this is a little, this is a horse of a different color, if this is not, this is a contractual agreement that we have with Liberty, and if it looks like it'll be, it'll be a permanent thing, and I'm gonna tell you, I hope it does, I think Liberty does a great job. I love having Liberty do the trash in our town, and I wish we could just, I just wish we could figure out and make some of these dead beings pay like they're supposed to, and everybody have garbage cans like they're supposed to.
Amen.
But, but anyway, um, and I hope that there is a time when we can say, woo, Liberty's permanent, brick that sucker up, but, um, what, um, where we are now, it's right now, it's a time, from period to period contractual agreement, and I would just like to just have that in there, I don't know if it warrants amending a motion, or just a, an aside in the minutes, or whatever. Okay, I would, I will amend that motion to say, to, to allow the, the trailer, the upgrade, um, and to be, to be reviewed with the contract, does that work for everybody?
Yes. Whoever's second.
And, um, I think that just protects us all. Okay. Yes.
Have amended motion by Councilwoman Youngblood, second by Councilman, this year. Any other discussion, rural call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
If it was the will of the previous council in the vote, um, and approval by the previous council to allow them to come in, in my vote is yes, if the minutes reflect something different, then, um, please allow this, um, whether to state that my vote would, would have been yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilman Randolph? Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, uh, put that language in there, so we can...
Councilwoman Johnson?
Okay, alright, motion was granted, thank you, Mr. Lee, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, uh, business item, we have the extending of the contract of Chief Robert Green. Chief Green, please come forward. After enough, uh, talking with Chief Green, he has graciously said that he would, um, be with us until December thirty-first, because of some things that he needed to continue to clean up with the agency, uh, funding, uh, and also some other, uh, things he needed to address, if you would at this time, he's so glad to inform the council, chief.
There are some things that you need me to finish, Chief Green. I was ready to go home. But, uh, I hate to start a job and not complete it, and there are several things that I need to make sure are completed properly, so I have agreed to stay until the end of December, not a date after that.
And also, with that, with, you know, with the interview process for the police chief, which we would be, uh, likely some, I think, chief definitely need to be on board to help the council. And President, thank you, chief, for continuing to help us, and of course, uh, you have done an excellent job since your contract started. I just wanna thank you and commend you for what that you've been doing, and encourage you to pursue, uh, helping us to get a permanent chief, uh, before your December thirty-first term is up.
Chief Green, can you have, um, just, can, can you just tell us in a nutshell, what's some things that have happened since you've been with this, this go around?
Well, a lot of the shootings have subsided substantially, and, uh, I owe that reduction in all the shootings across the city to the partnership we have with the task force that's here. Got, been able to get the offices, a lot of equipment, the equipment is gradually coming in, they didn't have uniforms, they're gradually getting those, they should be getting seven vehicles any day now, and it looks like we will be able to get two additional vehicles, uh, from funds with, that we ascertained through the US Attorney's Office, that three hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, and we, uh, receive, we're gonna receive a contribution from a local entity that's gonna allow us to get some additional equipment. So the offices are getting a lot of things that they need, and plus they're getting some organizational structure, because I've always been a strict disciplinarian.
And, and let me go a little, just bear to admit, this is not gonna impede the, uh, interview process for the chief, we will continue to move forward with that, and once we select that chief, uh, Chief, uh, Green, we'll be working with that particularly. Councilwoman Jackson?
Chief, thank you, you've done a fine job, I appreciate, uh, you coming in, I think when, um, we had our initial discussion about, um, bringing you in, I was, um, very vocal with, um, President Bowie, and, um, saying that we needed someone. However, I do feel like that because we've taken the time, um, all of your time, to, um, select a chief, and we haven't selected a chief currently, that, that puts us in a precarious situation, because you were hired to do something, um, and that's to be the, you know, chief, um, and if you clean up everything, then that doesn't give the, um, chief, whomever that may be, the opportunity to, to learn, um, and be beside you, and that was my intentions for asking that you come aboard, because I thought this process was gonna start faster, uh, run smoother, and then, then they would have at least four to six weeks to be beside you, to, um, learn on the job. I would be in, in favor, um, if this is actually going to move quickly, um, I think if we hire you back for the extended amount of time, it will not move as fast as it should, I think we'll take, be a lot of time, and maybe we'll have a chief in January. Um, I feel like that we should consider having you part-time, um, that you, you come aboard, um, and be a consultant with our, our new chief, that's something I expressed on last week when it was brought up for six months, or at, at minimum, if we're going to ask you to come back, that we do it only for, uh, one month, and then have you, uh, part-time at that time, because when we have someone that has your capabilities and qualities, and could actually be in the position, then we, we're more relaxed, and we don't take the time to get that things done, and I think it's just irresponsible to continue to ask you to do something when we're not doing our part, and so that's why I'm standing on this issue.
Well, it would be within a week or so, I don't see that, you know, timeline being delayed, uh, and you still have extra, extra time to be with the chief and learn, so, uh, there are some things, dynamic things taking place, that I can force someone to post it, you know, the job description, that's outside of my scope, so when finally get it posted, and all the information we needed, that's when I move forward, it wasn't a derelict on my behalf, and the process is still moving, and we still have enough time to move forward with the chief, because if you have experience, you have it, if you have it, then you don't have it.
And what we're, we're talking about moving forward, but we're also talking about finances, and the fact of the matter is that we're expending twenty thousand dollars, we've already expended thirty thousand dollars, so that's fifty thousand dollars we're looking to expend, when we don't, we're not taking anyone and training them where they need to be, we're not taking these funds and insuring, that's not even a part of his contract currently, that, that he is to work with the, the next year. That's what we're asking, requesting, and he could say, no, my job is to make sure that this is completed, and that's all I'm going to do, I'm quite sure, because of the professional that he is, he won't do it that way, but the fact of the matter is, Mr. President, we've known since May, that we don't, that we don't have...
When I first called chief, well, that was one of the decisions that I asked him, will we select the next chief that he would work with? That was prior to him becoming, or that you were meant to, once we receive appointed chief, am I correct?
And, and you stated, when we appointed him, that we would have a chief by the end of this contract, and, right, until the end of this contract has come, and we don't have a chief, right?
But we have one, we have...
And I'm quite sure we'll have one by the next one, but what I'm saying in this, in this matter, is that we need to be cognizant of how we're spending the money that we're allocating for that department, because if we're going to, if we want you, let's hire you, and keep it with the contract for the next year, and say, let's, let's come on board for a year, but let's not continue to pay this type of money out in a contract.
Delayed, but, delayed, but it won't be enough. Councilwoman Youngblood?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Councilwoman Jackson, your, your, um, sentiment is about saving money, particularly in this time, and we don't know what we've got, we still don't know what we've got, where it's gone, and where it is, but, but we do know, we do know in the latest department, where, you know, what it's going now, but if you recall, in the first couple of months, first two months, that Chief Green was here, he was really stifled from doing really anything, which stifled everything. So I think to try to go forward with, with trying to find a chief, when he was really trying to, even though, if anybody knows the bearings, it's Chief Green, but he, I, I mean, I, I can pretty much attest to, he wasn't able to, to execute any sort of plan, I don't mean to speak for you, Chief Green, but I know what, what problems you had, or, or to the degree that you were meant, in trying to get things done, in trying to get into your office, and be able to do day-to-day operations in the department, I'm tethered, so I, I think that, that it, that the, the, um, conditions were pretty much extraordinary, so had it been, I, I think that that might have been a fair statement, had it been, just had we been working, had everybody in the city been working in ordinary circumstances, but things were anything but ordinary, or anything but fair, so, um, it, it's, it's really just been within the last night that, that I think that we've been able to really start the process, all things considered, so, that's something that we have to think of as well. But any, I will say this too, any amount of time that we have to have Chief Green, if we could get him six months longer, it would be worth every penny, because of how he's standing in the ship up there, um, it's, it's, I, I guess, that's one area, you can't, you can't have too much, it's in the public's psyche, I said, but I sure do appreciate you looking after our finances.
I would like to make one comment, Mr. Bowie, before I sit down, when I was recruited by my last department, I was recruited in the nationwide search, I had never been to that city in my life, and the only thing that was given to me is the keys to my car, keys to my office, a policies and procedures manual, and that's all I needed, I never missed a beat.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you allow me to answer questions, what I heard you say, and you can correct me if I was wrong, um, with the chief being... um, with the chief being cycle for over two months, or right at two months in City South, it's a three-month contract and he's really just gotten the opportunity to get things done. And the last one is that, um, day-to-day operation once again impeded and allowed for our funds to be misused or misused because we could have done this differently and we could have been in a situation where we've been ready to hire a chief as a consultant to our new chief if that hadn't been the case for the last two months. Is that what I'm understanding? Cause that's what I'm hearing.
Well, actually, what I heard you say is, what I heard you say is...
No, I said, what I heard you say.
Well, I was responding to what I heard, I thought I heard you say. Why don't we just quit arguing up here?
I understand what exactly what you stated regarding the chief...
What I, what I, what I was stating, let me just be real clear. What I was stating is, because the chief had to come up here and had to go through all the motions and play the games, that put us all off the track. Cause we just, we, we had to do too much of going rickety-rag on a track going like this. And when it comes to electing, to getting a chief of police, or a chief of anything, or a fire chief, I'd rather take another month and make sure we did get a doggone good one than be paddy-wise and pound foolish and be in a hurry. I think it's far better. I've been up here 12 years, and before that, I was over there where you are for 17 years. Before that, I was over to the city. In the, oh, it's okay, I was in the DA's office upstairs where you were. I was in the, okay, well, I was in, all right, I was in the DA's office, in five DA's offices for 17 years. And then I was in the DA's office and now for 17 years. I do know a little bit about it, and I work very closely with law enforcement. I do know a little bit about this, and as I said, I have been over here for 12 years. So, um...
Okay, Councilwoman Youngblood, I was asking you, right, your experience, I was asking you, the fact that we're in a position today, was it because of something that the mayor's office had done, or that was just a guess?
I didn't hear you...
Have they impeded us, I said day-to-day operations, that's what my question. Have they impeded our ability to move forward? Have they misused their power in such a way that has caused us to have to delay doing what we need to do? And that's getting a chief, so I, Chief Green can, um, make sure that they're trained up. That's what I asked. Is this a part of what the mayor has done, the rickety-ragging of the trains?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all I asked.
And my apologies, cause you know, what, what I heard you do, and I heard you criticizing the question. Move out moving quickly, that's what I heard. And my apologies to you.
I heard the same thing.
Okay, I... You can hear whatever you want to, I stated it was on the radar.
The way you said it, I heard, so...
No, I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to him. What I stated back to you was, reported, asking about your question, what I stated to him is that you said we were gonna move. You said the reason why we haven't moved is because of what happened down there. And I was asking you, do I understand that correctly? That's what I was doing, I was clarifying. And so you stated it was not about us not doing what we needed to do up here. It was about rickety-rag things down there and him not being, being impeded from doing his job. And I asked you that, and that's exactly what that was about.
I think we did exactly what was about it.
Okay, all right, Councilwoman Thompson, we have a call for it.
Okay, oh, I don't wanna talk about that, I'm, I'm trying to get something else on there.
We have a call for it, I do.
Oh, go on, do what you're gonna do.
Roll call.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a, we have a motion, uh, to extend the contract for, uh, Chief Robert Green until December 31st. Uh, we have a motion on the floor.
I tell you, Woody Johnson, make sure you put some work in there to, um, to ensure that it doesn't change. He said he told you friends to put the contract there.
I wish he would have just went ahead and forwarded that contract that I can suppose to have. It's the same language that we had, isn't it?
What is?
Yeah, the same language. All right, we have a motion, do we have a motion on the floor? We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shaw, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood. Uh, and I think Chief Green is very well worth it, just having his knowledge around, so just make, makes the chief immigrant.
Roll call.
President Bowie? Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm saying.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
All right, thank you, motion passed. Councilwoman, um, Thompson.
Uh, this is new business item that I've noticed that I, I wanted to ask you about, the Dallas, uh, county's, uh, sports complex, contract is in, go soon.
Yeah, I do have it, I was gonna bring that up. You know, uh, over two years ago, over a year ago, we passed a resolution, uh, 139, that's 1718, giving an annual supplement to separate employers going to time. But due to the fact that we have dissolved the contract, I think that we need to resent, resent the, uh, supplement paid that they received. Uh, cause I know Sean Van Dyker received 18,800, Mr. Barry received, uh, 4,325, Mr. Terry Jackson received 6,000, Ms. Ellison received 4,800 dollars, Jane Spear received 4,325. And that was the supplement when we had the complex. Since we have not enrolled that contract now, I think we need to bring back, uh, the workers to take the service and that. Okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Do we have a motion on the floor, do we have a, have a motion by Councilwoman Youngblood, second, Councilwoman Jackson?
Any further discussion, questions? Councilwoman...
Let me ask you that, with those salaries, will we go back into the, uh, budget? Uh, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Have we notified those employees and made them aware that their salaries will change?
Cause I thought about it, I was going through that.
You said we have?
No, I said, not, not we can take it. It's not official, then we don't...
Are we gonna do it?
Now, I think it's today.
That's why I was gonna ask, is it effective immediately?
Today, yes, once we take, you know...
So the next pay?
Yes, ma'am. Cause I think it was in order, to take the vote first, then of course we can reset the stuff.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'm seeing what Woody just said.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
This is the last one, you know, we received an email and I think we need to, uh...
Oh, how about we need to vote first?
Oh, okay.
All right.
Tell me, tell me, tell me.
President Bowie?
Yes, I thought you were talking.
Councilwoman Bush?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Okay, all right, go ahead.
The last one, you know, we received an email requesting that we, uh, uh, defund that, uh, position that, uh, down in the, in the finance office, that, uh, has been moving, one of her accountants have been moved into, uh, to the mayor office.
I have a request came from Miss Wade.
Oh, okay. That's why, that's why I asked you, didn't you get your request?
When did, when did send it out? July, Friday, April?
Right.
Right?
I think I can't read Miss Wade?
Yes, in one account, cause it's temporarily defunded.
I just, I would advise we, uh, hold that one until the next council meeting so we can talk a little more about that since it is, and can be misconstrued, we take action in that position. And, and, and it was up for some liability issues perhaps, uh, given the way things have been done. We were proactive, we were okay, but I think if we react at this point without clarity, we could get ourselves in harm's way.
That was, that was the position that...
It's vacant.
This recommendation from, from the director of the finance office, and she, she...
No, she said most of the negative decision is vacant. She says, you know, what I was requesting is to temporarily defund it because we were not, with the layoff in terms of purchase order process, it's not as well. And I think we can manage until the time, you know, till we have a chance to...
So you just wanted to fund that position within the department?
Right.
And does not affect the individual hired out of that department?
No, because that person has been promoted to the mayor's office.
No, I, I recant, then I did not understand, I thought you were saying something else. So I do apologize for...
And let me ask you a question too, was that, are we ups with the record affiliation?
Um, yeah, we're in the September, which is where we should be at this point. Of course, you know, it did, we're going back for, um, September, and so we're in the month of October, so we are kind of...
That's a long time, I had, someone...
But in terms of this, uh, overall, the demand that we're getting, because you have, um, also fully defined public works department, which largely, that's where purchase order mostly come from in terms of service. We use the department again, um, is, is the, the workflow is just not exist, so I think it's been until the upcoming, which come also, I'm just asking...
Temporary.
Temporary to the department. And there will be a constant...
Councilwoman?
If no one is currently in that, in that position, um, no one's currently in that position. And, um, I, I think we can wait to the next council meeting, cause I have questions, like, um, I thought that she actually did time, she sort of did something, remember at one time she was moved down to the HR department that she may be, um, in your office, you just said something about purchase order being down, so, I mean, I would give the...
She, she doesn't, I can tell you what she does.
Okay, I, I would say give the, the council the full, um, ability, um, all council members to, to ask questions to better... And if you're the person that would know best about your office, and if she's not there, there's no money being utilized anyway. And in two weeks, we can handle that in a, in a work session discussing fully, and you can, um, let us know. I know you gave us a sentence, but you can let us know directly why.
I'm telling you directly now.
Right, we're gonna see a full council, and we're just giving everybody the opportunity to, to, um, vote on that.
Right, and no, she's not having payroll, person that does the payroll process and handle payroll, and that would be Ms. Stewart.
Ms. Who?
Ms. Stewart.
Ms. Stewart?
Janice Stewart.
So when she was moved down to payroll, um, last year?
She was do, she was, she was doing the payroll functions. I, I, when I got back, I switched payroll functions back to Ms. Stewart, who was currently doing. I, what I do in my office is called cost training, and just make sure everybody can be fully functional in the absence of another person. So when she was in that capacity, before I left, she was working during process of payroll, I switched her to the record affiliation. We've had before, this is not new to us, we've had, um, long before you all came aboard, we've had one accountant in that position, and that was much more active, and so that's why I requested, that gives the opportunity to get someone else that's capable of it. And I think there will be a good fit for the office as well, so that's why I'm requesting it. Uh, there's just not a whole lot of processing going on as you're aware.
Right, I, I am with it, and you actually sent that recommendation to us last week.
Yes, I did.
And so we don't have to handle it at a special call meeting, we could actually do it at the next council meeting, discuss it at work session.
Right, but, I mean, yeah, you can, I just brought it before you because I didn't want us to, well, move, I didn't want it to be a moverhead process, I would like to be included in the process.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you get to work session and discuss it, I think you, you better than anyone would know. Just like I said, the last I heard about her position, she was down there, I knew you moved back, and there was some...
That was when I heard you.
Right.
Let, let, let's show everybody to be clear.
Right.
The mayor moved her out of my office.
Right.
It had complete autonomy over the payroll.
When you were gone?
Right, in my absence, and that was something that normally happens in finance. Yeah, it's under HR module, but it is a finance component to manage payroll. And so when that happened, that was not what, what was going on previously. So I requested her back in my office so we could, uh, have better handle on payroll. So that's, that's, you know, that's not relative to what's going on now.
Cause she no longer does that function?
It's not relative because she no longer, out of payroll, all the payroll function is back in the payroll, in the finance department.
Councilwoman Shaw?
We have heard enough affirmation of Ms. Wade, who was requesting this, uh, defunding. And I'm gonna move, if we go ahead and accept her recommendation, I know that if we go ahead and defund that position.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, uh, Councilman Shaw, second, uh, Councilwoman Bowley. This, this one temporary, right?
Right. President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm saying.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
All right, most question. Do I have, can I vote for the most, can I vote for the most?
Move for it.
I got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shaw, so do I have a second? All right.